Good morning, everyone. Thank you. I am Councilwoman Felicia Porter. I'm representing the 10th District and Chairperson of the Public Health and Environment Committee. Just a reminder for all those that are joining here in the chamber, please turn off or mute your cellphones. Also joining today, we have Councilman Mark Conway, 4th District Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have Councilman Mark Parker from the 1st District.
Thank you, Ms.
And we also have Councilwoman Odette Ramos from the 14th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I don't see that we have any representatives. Oh, we do have a representative from the mayor's office, Dr. DeRaza. Thank you so much for being here, ma'am. And the committee staff person is Marguerite Kern. So today, we are following up on our series of legislative oversight hearings. And today, we are understanding psychiatric rehabilitation programs in Baltimore City for the purpose of examining accessibility, effectiveness, and regulatory oversight along with state-level partners of PRP services, ensuring they align with community needs and best practices in mental health and behavioral health care. The discussion will focus on improving the coordination, accountability, and equitable service delivery of PRPs within the city of Baltimore. So with regard to opening remarks, I've shared this time and time again over the course of these legislative oversight hearings. As we unpack the opioid crisis within the city of Baltimore, we are unpacking the issues within our city as it relates to healthcare coordination. What are the drivers of some of those issues within our city as far as our neighborhoods? And also tangible solutions of what we can do at the city level and also in partnership with those at the state level, what we can do to rectify a lot of these issues that we're seeing within our community that have led up to this crisis that we are seeing within our city. So I want to go to, just for a matter of procedure, this is going to be a little bit outside of our normal procedure for the Public Health and Environment Committee. I know we often do public testimony first, but I want to give deference to our state-level partners. I'm super grateful that they are here today and we have, you know, some great insight that you'll see. We'll first start with our first presentation with the Behavioral Health Administration Deputy Secretary Alyssa Lord. And then virtually, we have Dr. James Yo and Tiffany DeProstero. So Deputy Secretary, I'll turn it over to you, ma'am.
Can you hear me now? All right, it's like a Verizon commercial. So as the chairwoman has stated, my name is Alyssa Lord and I have the honor and privilege of serving as Deputy Secretary for the Maryland Department of Health Behavioral Health Administration. I'd like to thank the chairwoman and the city council for the opportunity to provide commentary during today's discussion of psychiatric rehabilitation programs. Are we, oh, there we go, I was just about to ask. All right, can we move on to the next slide, please? Next slide. So for context, I have provided a definition of what PRP is as defined by the state of Maryland. PRP, or psychiatric rehabilitation programs, are accreditation-based licensed programs that provide community-based comprehensive rehabilitation and recovery services and supports and promote successful community integration and the use of community resources. Over the past several years, the state has seen significant growth in PRPs across the state. However, the preponderance of new PRPs have been in the Baltimore City area. The department has also been concerned, as we have identified trends, of the same individuals MDH is licensing as being those that are providing services across multiple PRPs. And therefore, this puts them in potential violation of the staffing regulations and requirements for being licensed to provide these services, which also puts in question the quality of the patient care that is being delivered. Moreover, the department has received numerous complaints from constituents, family members, community advocacy groups, and other provider types alleging fraudulent practices. Most often complainants notes that the provider is unknown to the participant, resulting in the allegation that the participant never received services. And what I have provided within the deck is you can see the growth within PRP services across the state dating back to 2016. And again, we are finalizing the 2024 and 2025 data. But as you can see, as of 2023, we had 700 psychiatric rehabilitation programs across the state serving 51,000 Marylanders. And that was based off of PRP providers that had billed the ASO, or the Administrative Service Organization, during that period of time. So as such, in review of this data, the department reviewed a subset of claims, trying to understand patterns and themes and trends of utilization, as well as begin to explore concerns related to Medicaid fraud, waste, and abuse. And we took a look at a subset of about 1.1 million in claims, which was across a couple of provider types, but predominantly that of PRP. And what we found was that $600,000 in payments were retractable. Those were Medicaid payments. And so upon review of the exponential growth, as well as concerns around Medicaid fraud, waste, and abuse, and hearing the concerns from our community, the department sought permission from CMS to initiate a pause on new provider enrollment into Medicaid that went into effect in July of 2024. While the pause on new provider enrollment into Medicaid does not preclude providers from seeking licensure for PRP services, they may enroll in private or self-pay, but it does limit their ability to bill Medicaid for these services. Next slide. So as part of our commitment to CMS for the approval of the pause on new provider enrollment, this is something that CMS takes very seriously around issuing a moratorium on providers being able to bill Medicaid, we had committed to a number of data extracts. And so what I am going to share with you is our most recent data extract that we had run pertaining to saturation. And so what you can see here is these were claims that were pulled through our administrative service organizations. We had done this across a couple of different service types that fall under the pause, but what the data I will be sharing with you solely pertains to PRP. And this was based off of fiscal year 2025, and it was based off of claims that were paid. And I will say, there are some limitations to this dataset and that providers have up to a year to submit their claims, so it is not fully representative of all the claims that we may receive for this service. And it is preliminary. And so I would like to thank Dr. Yo and Tiffany DeProspero and Shreeda Hawks, who have supported this effort within the Maryland Department of Health. Next slide, please. And my apologies that this is a little bit small, but what we had done was a geospatial analysis. So we had utilized geo-mapping to map those providers across the state. What you see here is just a snapshot of Baltimore, but we had done this for the entire state. At a more granular level, to explore the clustering of provider locations by jurisdiction and zip code. And what you can see here is that the majority of PRP providers are clustered around several parts of Baltimore City with a total of 241 PRP providers and locations. And Baltimore City PRP providers represent approximately 35% of providers statewide. Next slide, please. And so as I mentioned before, we have seen this continued growth in utilization of PRP. If we compare 2023, where about 51,000 people received PRP services for the entire year, what we are seeing here in the first six months of fiscal year 25 is that there were 654 provider sites and locations across the state, but 48,000 Marylanders had been served. So we certainly anticipate that we will exceed what we had seen in an entire year of 2023 within, you know, we may, I don't want to say double because the numbers are still preliminary, but we do anticipate to see continued growth through fiscal year 2025. And so this mapping drills down into the geographic distribution of sites and service recipients. So not only looking at locations, but how many Medicaid beneficiaries may be receiving these services, again, reiterating the clustering pattern shown on the previous slide. And as indicated, the volume of service delivery is tied to the highest concentration of providers. So when we went down, and our geo-mapping allows us to literally go down to the block level, and we were able to see six, seven, eight PRP providers within the same block. Sometimes we had several PRP providers in the same building. Next slide, please. So some of our key takeaways, you know, this slide further highlights the points that have been made on the previous slide, but this provides provider comparisons across other parts of the state. And so Baltimore continues to maintain the largest prevalence of PRP providers, of which many are in four zip codes alone, 212-01, 212-18, 21229, and 21215. And that is representative also of what we have seen in the mapping. So what is the department doing about this? And so want to spend a moment or two talking about this. So we are doing some additional data analysis based off of some preliminary feedback that we have received when we shared this during last week's Commission on Behavioral Healthcare Treatment and Access and Behavioral Health Advisory Council Coalition meetings. And so we are going to be taking a look at Medicaid enrollment in high provider areas. And we are also going to be taking a look at PRP utilization by population to better understand who is being served by these programs. The other piece that we want to explore, and we've begun conversations, is in partnership with Medicaid and some of our provider stakeholders, is developing fitness criteria for licensure for community-based behavioral health organizations. And the criteria being explored take into account a couple of very high-level buckets. So that includes defining saturation criteria for each service line, really understanding what is the volume of services to the volume of the population that are being identified as needing services, potentially promulgating wait lists for providers to be able to enter based upon the volume of existing providers, and trying to figure out provider-population ratios. The second bucket is around ensuring that our providers understand our COMAR requirements to operate a community-based organization in the state of Maryland. I have had the opportunity of talking with a number of providers who have submitted their licensure, and there is wide understanding around operating behavioral health programs in the state of Maryland. And so we want to make sure that we are putting quality and access to quality care and equitable care at the forefront of what we're doing at the state of Maryland. So we are going to be taking a look, for example, at competency assessments, which we see in other parts of the state through the Health Occupation Boards, for example, the number of years of experience that these providers are offering, their staffing plans, their sustainability plans, engagement with community, and a financial risk assessment. And then the third bucket is addressing accreditation body limitations. So Maryland is an accreditation-based state for licensing, so they have to be accredited by one of several organizations and meet those standards. But one of the things that we have found is when we review those accreditation-based reports is that there could be, there are QIPs, or Quality Improvement Plans, that are associated. So we want to make sure that as providers are applying for that licensure, that they have met all QIP requirements. And again, these are all just examples of things that the department are actively exploring. And so we are going to be moving forward with the convening of a small work group across the state, which will include providers, some of our trade organizations. We would welcome the city council's participation in that to really explore how do we overlay this provider fitness criteria so that we are building out a quality continuum of care. And I just want to iterate that we at the department care deeply about Marylanders getting access to high-quality behavioral health services, and that remains our utmost priority and focus. And I am sorry if I exceeded my seven minutes. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And colleagues, I know there was quite some movement back here behind the dais regarding the presentation of this data. And so I want to provide an opportunity, because Deputy Secretary Lord has to leave soon, I want to provide an opportunity for my collaborator in this work, Councilman Torrance, to provide some opening remarks. And then I will, and then I'll recognize other council members that are here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Madam Secretary. I just want to say that the progress you've made in terms of looking deeper into the weeds of how we can appropriately do quality and scale it to a point where we make sure people actually get the healthcare and the support that they need is much appreciated. Your office has been responsive to when we've had issues with providers, and I just want to thank you for that. As someone who unfortunately had a bad actor in their district, I know all too well what it looks like when things go wrong. But I know there are good actors in the city who are fit to meet the needs of our community members without it being just a means of creating wealth for themselves. To my residents, I know that we struggle with this because we have a high number of persons who need behavioral health, mental health, substance use supports, even for my friends who are returning citizens who need that support to re-enter society. So I recognize the supports are there, but I want to make sure that I'm here as a collaborator with you to make sure that we have good actors, not only in my district, but in this city. And then I am thankful for our chair's leadership on this. I don't have a public health lens. I know my lane, but I know that there is a person who is a strong fighter for this on this council and who I look to not only as a colleague, but as a mentor on how to handle mental health, behavioral health, and all the health issues on this council. So I look forward to the discussion among my colleagues, and I thank you for being here today.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Thank you. James and I went to college together, and so it's a little interesting to see us behind this dais like this. Yeah, so thank you so much for your kind words. I also want to recognize Councilman John Bullock from the 9th District. And then I also want to recognize Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to our next presenter. Just want to make sure that we have time for you. And then colleagues, we'll go into a line of questioning. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Dan Rabid. I'm the Policy Director at Behavioral Health System Baltimore. We are the local behavioral health authority in Baltimore City and partner closely with the Behavioral Health Administration. We are also very appreciative that Deputy Secretary Lord joined us this morning and could share all of that really rich information. Next slide, please. Just to start, just to give a quick little overview of BHSB. You can see our vision, mission, and value statement up there. Next slide, please. I won't read them, but it says, provide some context. BHSB was formed in 2013 as a merger between Baltimore Mental Health System and Baltimore Substance Abuse System. BMHS was a nonprofit that was founded back in the 80s, and so we have a long history of serving Baltimore City. Next slide, please. Our core functions as an LBHA include managing public funds. So we have contracts with a number of providers in the community that we fund. There are generally providers who don't bill Medicaid or can't bill Medicaid for the services they provide, things like harm reduction services, peer-related services. We also, a big part of what we do is system management. So that is ensuring compliance with regulation, responding to complaints, overseeing the system of care in the city. Local partnerships, so we try to have a strong partnership with all the providers in the city. Public education, we educate the public on 988 and various other behavioral health issues, if possible, and advocacy. It's a part of what I do, which is lifting up opportunities and needs in the system to our elected officials. Next slide, please. And just sort of where we sit, the Department of Health and the Behavioral Health Administration that Deputy Secretary leads is sort of the highest level of the public behavioral health system. We sit under them and interface as the liaison with behavioral health organizations in the city, and they in turn serve our residents and communities. Next slide, please. So I wanted to drill down a little bit, just to talk about what is a psychiatric rehabilitation program. There has been a proliferation of these types of programs, but they do serve an important function. Have two definitions up there. The first one is from CAROLON, our Medicaid Administrative Services Organization, which is pretty similar to what the Deputy Secretary said. The second definition, which is that psych rehab creates the space and structure for meaningful life in the community, comes from one of the National Psych Rehab Associations, the Center for Psychiatric Rehabilitation. And I think that sort of encompasses it in a more digestible form. I actually worked at a PRP when I first got out of undergrad. It was a residential rehabilitation program, an RRP, but those are a type of PRP. I know there's a lot of acronyms. But we worked with folks with serious mental illness. They were often coming out of state hospitals, like Springfield Hospital, and we helped them with activities of daily living, helped them to balance their bank accounts, to clean their, you know, to keep their apartments clean, to make it to their appointments, to take their medications, and really tried to help them to be stable in the community and to develop additional skills so that they could stay in the community and not end up in higher levels of care. And that's kind of essentially what PRPs do. And so, next slide, please. I have too many papers up here, I apologize for my disorganization. PRPs are a part of a system, of course. This, I apologize if this infographic is a little small, but there's all these different types of mental health programs. PRPs are outpatient, and like the services can be provided in a person's home. They can be provided in an office. The residential rehabilitation programs, like I worked at, provided apartments or townhomes for the residents. But that's sort of the level of care that they provide. It's not treatment. PRP alone is not going to treat somebody's mental health concerns. You need psychiatry and therapy and other sorts of supports. But PRP is an essential component of the range of services that people may need to stay in a community. Next slide. So what exactly do PRPs do? This comes from CAROLON, which is the entity that would be reimbursing PRPs for services. They support the integration into the community using community resources, teaching community living skills, activities of daily living, helping folks to connect with family, peers, and have like a meaningful social life, community support, case management of various types. And it's billed as a monthly service. So PRPs need to see the folks that they're serving a couple of times every month. Depending on the level of PRP, it can be as low as two times a month in order to bill for it. For the more intensive services, like RRP services, it can be as much as like 15 or 20 times a month. And that's sort of how PRPs are funded. Next slide, please. And so who is eligible for a PRP? It's generally someone with a pretty severe mental health diagnosis. You would need to have a diagnosis of a psychotic disorder, like schizophrenia or schizoaffective disorder, so you know, a thought disorder, as it's sometimes called. Or you would need to be, have had a finding of incompetent to stand trial or not criminally responsible, which generally means you had a pretty significant diagnosis as well. Or you would have a diagnosis of, still serious, but maybe not as serious of a diagnosis, such as bipolar, major depression, or borderline personality disorder, and have impairment and functioning that is demonstrated. And then all of this must be attested to by a licensed mental health professional who makes a referral and tests to this level of needing PRP services to the ASO, to Medicaid. And if you are receiving PRP, you can't receive other types of community services, such as assertive community treatment, targeted case management, medical day program, residential substance use. PRP is supposed to take care of the services you need to stay in the community. You're also only supposed to get services from one PRP. I know we were talking about that before the hearing started. And so that's another thing that the ASO evaluates. Next slide, please. The state, Deputy Secretary Lord provided more rich data than this, but we also see the increase in PRPs here in Baltimore. This line graph shows youth and adult PRP in terms of the number of people who are served. And just in the last couple of years, you can see that that is going up more significantly for adults than for youth and adolescents. Next slide, please. And you see the same sort of trend line with expenditures, the amount of money that is being spent to provide PRP services. Next slide. And so that was just a quick synopsis of what a PRP is and what they do. In terms of how, of what oversight there is around PRPs, again, the Deputy Secretary went over some of this. But Maryland Department of Health and BHA, they ensure accreditation. They are the ones that issue the license. They can issue sanctions, corrective action plans, and address the findings that may come up from complaints or critical incident reviews that happen at the local level. Medicaid is supposed to conduct audits of reimbursement and pays the claims. BHSB and other local behavioral health authorities, we process agreements to cooperate. So that's a part of the process of getting licensure. And but, and the provider needs to provide a certain types of documentation, such as use and occupancy permits, fire and safety permits, and some other ones. And then we would process the agreement to cooperate, which is a part of the process of getting licensure. We investigate complaints and critical incidents and make recommendations to BHA on further action. And we also convene the provider network to promote best practices, develop relationships with providers, and help share information with them. At the city level, the permit, the building permit, use occupancy permit, and issues of zoning and issues of fire safety are handled by city agencies, as well as the enforcement of any city ordinances. Next slide. The Deputy Secretary went over this, but there is a pause on provider enrollment in Medicaid and receiving Medicaid funding. These are the three types of programs. PRPs, substance use disorder, PHPs, partial hospitalization programs, and substance use disorder, IOPs, intensive outpatient programs. The pause was extended for another six months. The more rural parts of the state, it was not extended another six months, but the most populous states or jurisdictions, rather, it was extended again through the end of this calendar year. Next slide. And part of this pause was to allow the state to revise the COMAR regulations that govern community behavioral health providers. It's known as COMAR 1063. This is ongoing. We really commend the state for taking this on, both for seeking the moratorium on Medicaid enrollment and for starting the process to revise these regulations. BHSB recommended that LBHA's be provided additional authority, additional requirements that we can impose before issuing an agreement to cooperate, more explicit partnership with the state. Those have not been incorporated in the drafts we've seen so far. We hope to continue to work with BHA to try to make that happen. But right now, this process is on hold. There was significant opposition from provider groups around these regulations. And the Maryland General Assembly, I forget the exact name, but the committee within the General Assembly that looks at regulations issued a hold on these regulations. So that's sort of where we're at with them right now. I think that's my last slide. Oh, sorry, one last slide. Do we have our resources? Please, you know, we are here to help ensure quality. If there is a provider and you're... If there is a provider in your district, please let us know. You can file a formal complaint on our website. It's pretty easy to find. There's a QR code there as well. You could check that out. Or, we're also happy to help. You can reach out to me or my colleague Adrienne. She sends her regards, by the way. She is out of the office this week. And we are happy to sort of do the paperwork with you or for you. But that's like the best way for us to be able to act and investigate what's going on with the provider, is to file a formal complaint. Thanks so much.
Thank you, thank you so much. In the interest of time, I want to make sure that we have the Deputy Secretary here. So colleagues, I'm going to allow one question, and then we'll go into public testimony. I see a few people in the audience in the chamber that would like to testify. So we're going to start off with one round of questions, and then we'll go into public testimony. So Deputy Secretary, I have a question related to the regulatory requirements of PRP facilities. What are the regulatory requirements that must be maintained by the PRP facility to maintain licensure and accreditation? And also, how does BHA follow up with any type of sanction and/or disciplinary action in relation to that licensure?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the question. I'm happy to provide in writing back to the City Council the full requirements related to PRP so that you have them for reference rather than run through them here, but they're all embedded in COMAR 1063. So I will provide that back to the City Council if you're fine with that approach. And then, in regards to managing complaints, as you heard from our colleagues at BHSP, we work in partnership with the locals. Now, the department can't comment on any active or ongoing investigations, but there is internally within BHA, there is a licensing and compliance team that is led by Ms. Sharita Hawks. And there is a process for evaluating any and all complaints as well as escalation pathways to go to the Office of the Inspector General, as well as the Medicaid Fraud and Vulnerable Victims Unit.
So with that being said, as you heard, we have quite a few of these programs within our city that are not doing the proper work that they're doing, but we continuously see them being renewed for licensure. How do we, like, what is, why is that?
So part of that goes back to COMAR 1063. And what I can share is that when COMAR was revised in the late 20 teens, it took a lot of the teeth, quote unquote, out of those regulations. And so, with some of the revisions that are proposed to be made, our goal is to put more standards around staffing, around making sure that there is compliance, around giving the department the tools that it needs to be able to work in partnership with our provider community and hold them accountable for the rendering of quality services. So our hope is that as additional conversations evolve between the department and our stakeholders regarding COMAR 1063, 1063 will give us some of the tools that we need to make sure that we are inviting good actors and maintaining good actors into the system and working to mitigate the number of bad actors that remain in the system.
Thank you. And I also like to recognize Councilman Paris Gray from the 8th District. Councilman Torrance, I'll turn it over to you for a line of questions. Just one question, sir.
So, I am really interested in the work that you're doing in terms of like the ratio of population, because I can tell you from talking to residents that we've had a number of PRPs in our neighborhood. I have one in my neighborhood, which is a one that's geared towards returning citizens. Love them, they're, they're a part of our community. But I just want to make sure, when we, when we're talking about looking at the ratio, what would that look like in terms of providers?
So it's a good question, and I appreciate it, only in part because we are just in the process of starting to unpack what this looks like. There are not many other national examples that look to apply provider ratios, and nor is this like what we see sometimes on the commercial side where providers are impaneled, and then once the commercial payer has enough providers, they may close that panel for adding new providers. So we want to be really thoughtful and intentional, because certainly the one thing that we don't want to do is create a chilling or a cooling effect for people who need access to these services. But what we want to also try and do is figure out how do we right-size, quote unquote, the number of PRP providers in any given community? And also, we want to make sure that people are getting to the PRP providers that are going to best meet their needs. So you talk about those that are working with returning citizens. Are there other PRP providers that may be needed in that community around working with individuals that are aging, or working with individuals who are families with children, right? So I think what we're trying to really understand is how are we building out a behavioral health continuum of care that is reflective of community needs? And that's the deeper dive that we need to do into that data. So two, again, very high-level preliminary points is just understanding the Medicaid enrollment and breaking that down by demographic information. That's sort of one of the initial next steps that we are going to take. And then what we'll try and do is cross-reference the number of people that are being served within maybe those four zip codes, and understanding what are the ratios of individuals being served to those PRP providers. Does that make sense?
No, that's perfect sense, because I instantly think about the ratios in terms of, I'm in a healthcare desert in West Baltimore. We don't have a lot of primary care. And a lot of these programs will rely on primary care access, and transit is a big barrier for a number of my residents. So I want people to get care, I want them to have the proper ratios, but I also recognize that there might be a line share there closer to some of the hospital systems, because that's the right thing to do, because our transit system isn't the best. So this is helpful for me to understand how you guys are diving into it. I thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for pulling together this hearing. I think it's, it's, it's an issue that we are all trying to grapple with. And Deputy Secretary, I really appreciated your presentation. The sort of hum while you were putting those maps up is, is because we're all experiencing some of the challenges and quality from some of the folks that are operating within our district. You would expect that when you see a map like this and you see all the resources around Baltimore, you would expect that Baltimore might not have quite the same, you know, the same problem as other parts of the state. But it's exactly the opposite, and I think it's around quality where we're seeing some of the challenge. One of the things that I think provides potentially an opportunity for us to do, I've been talking about this with my colleagues and of course with the mayor's office, with regard to how folks make decisions about the provider that they work with. It's really hard for folks to determine the quality of care. The system is not transparent. And this is, this is really across healthcare generally. If you're looking to find a primary care provider, a doctor, it's really hard to tell the good from the bad doctors. I would say, though, in a very different world, if we're looking to find a school, you can just look that up, and you'll see the grade that the school gets because of its outcomes. So I think one of the things, and I'm curious if we have the ability to get this at the state level and begin to provide this as a way for folks to assess quality or outcomes, do we have perhaps the ability to get data such as, like, I'm blanking on that. I want to put this together, sentence, but get data that shows us results out of these PRPs. For instance, if we had unidentifiable test information over time that will tell us the results from folks that start in the program and their progress throughout a program in our various PRPs, is that something that could be helpful and be provided perhaps at the state level?
So there are a couple of potential data points that we will also be taking a look at, and I think Dan alluded to this, is how many different PRP providers is a single individual accessing, right? So is it because that provider that they've been referred to is not the right fit, or the hours of operation don't align with their schedule? We also want to crosswalk this with emergency department and inpatient utilization, right? So our hope is that if they're receiving services in the community, they're less likely to access more acute levels and more costly levels of care. And then I think there's a couple of other, I'll call them qualitative pieces, that I think we'd be remiss if we don't mention. So we do an annual consumer perception of care survey in which, that goes out through Carillon. And what we do-
It goes out through what?
Carillon. That is the Maryland Department of Health. It is the Administrative Service Organization for Medicaid for Behavioral Health Services. And so, we partner with Carillon to send out this survey. It's a randomized survey to individuals across the state around their experience in accessing services and with their provider. So we do that on an annual basis, and we're just about to launch that process, so the timing is good. So over the next couple of months, we should have some results from that preliminary survey. The other piece is that the department has contracted with a third-party independent entity that goes out and meets with providers and interviews patients. And so, part of the reason why we did that is we wanted an independent review outside of the state's perspective of how people are receiving care and how providers are rendering that service. And so, it's called our Clinical Quality Teams. And they go out on an annual basis and survey hundreds of providers. And actually, one of the things that we asked them to do over the past six months is to prioritize and increase the number of PRP providers. So we have some early data, and I'm happy to share that deck with you as well. It was presented at the last commission meeting. And then, I think the other thing that you're alluding to is what we call sort of net promoter scores, right? So when you go onto a website, you can look to see how many stars does a provider have? And so, we have been talking with some of our community partners to understand and ascertain what is their process for soliciting and eliciting feedback from individuals that receive services? And so, Dr. Yeo in particular on our team has been leading this effort. And so, we're in conversations with one of the provider groups to say, would you be willing, could we standardize this, right? Because that's the other thing, is depending upon where you get your care, there's nineteen different surveys, and they all look a little different. So could we work to standardize a survey that a subset of providers would pilot so that we could get preliminary feedback? And then look to see if we could get additional provider buy-in or engagement? And at the same time, we'd also have to do a campaign with recipients of services to say, you should be empowered to complete this, right? Your data is anonymous, right? I think that's the other piece that we want to make sure is that people feel protected when they submit this information, and that we're going to act on it. So those are a couple of things that are already active or in the pipeline around how we think about other pathways for identifying quality through quantitative and qualitative mechanisms.
If I, if I could just add one quick thing, there's also a consumer quality team that BHSP partners to help coordinate. The Mental Health Association of Maryland is the entity that runs it, and they interview consumers, like the program participants, at a wide range of provider types. And so we have that data too, and they ask like, how are you being treated? How's the food? How are the conditions? How's it? And so, BHSP helps with that, as well as the other efforts that BHA works on. So that could be another data source.
So I'm really encouraged to hear that. I've been working with a small group of providers here in Baltimore City that are actually eager to have this kind of effort play out that can help sort the good from the bad. Because as we all are experiencing, when we have providers that are not doing the right thing, it makes it worse for everyone. And the urgency of this issue is obvious. So whatever we can do to help people sort out the good from the bad, will help those that are doing good work do more of that good work, and maybe help those that aren't quite there yet, and honestly, trying to get there, learn from those best practices. If I can, and this can be a request of the committee, and I would love to pull, pull you in, Madam Chair, I would like to bring together the state, the mayor's office, I see Sarah Whaley, we were talking about this literally yesterday in the background, and some of the partners that I've been working with to provide some of the context and perspective that we've been bringing to the table thus far. I think you guys have the ability to see this through in a way that I can't quite do as a councilman. So I would love to see this quality control piece be a big move going forward. So appreciate all the work you guys are doing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And definitely, just, you're exactly spot on. And to follow up on that, the Deputy Secretary and I have been talking about what those quality care metrics look like from, like, you're looking at the provider side, we're looking at from the actual operation. And so, we would love to marry what you're doing with what we're doing, because we can't necessarily connect the dots if we're not looking at it from a systemic perspective. So definitely want to collaborate on that. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sort of going with the same set of questioning, it, I wondered, we just really have to make sure that these are working for our residents. And it sounds like this quality control work that you're starting to do makes a lot of sense. It seems like we should have been doing this already? And you mentioned that at some point in time, COMAR was changed so that it wasn't done. Can you talk a little bit about that? And are we going to be ending up closing some of the PRPs if the quality assurance isn't there?
Yeah, so historically, and COMAR is the code of Maryland, right? That regulates the ability for the state of Maryland to sort of as regulatory body overseeing community-based health providers and a number of other services across, health services across the state. And so, when Maryland moved to accreditation-based licensing, so what that means is, as I mentioned before, there are national accreditation organizations. And so, community-based behavioral health providers were able to go and get their accreditation, which basically was their ability to move forward with applying for licensure at the state. And the state had, has had fewer parameters to deny a license. The other thing is, under our participation in Medicaid, Maryland isn't any willing provider state. So anyone who goes through the process and in which Medicaid provides reimbursement for the service can apply to enroll in Medicaid for reimbursement, which is why the pause was something that is not done very often. And so, our goal with the revisions of COMAR 1063 was really to build quality and equity and parity back into the regulations. So it gave the department the tools in the toolbox that we need to make sure that quality is at the forefront of what we're doing. If you take a look back in the slides that I presented, and you just see that significant growth in providers, you also map that to when there were changes to COMAR. What one could make, one could surmise. Now, the one thing I do want to uphold, and I think these were comments that were made, is we have some really good providers in the state. So I don't want to blanket PRP providers with this notion that they're not good providers. They provide essential services to Marylanders. As Dan has pointed out, they need to be coupled with other wraparound behavioral health or substance use supports. But we do see them as an essential part of the constellation of services that we're providing to Marylanders. But we also have to be mindful that, for example, PRP providers, and this goes into some of the requirements that we'll send you, it is not the same staffing requirements that may be needed for other types of services across the state. And so, we have seen this proliferation and growth in these services because it has smaller staffing requirements, it has lower overhead, it has, it has significant reimbursement that's attached to it. But again, that is all meant to drive quality and keeping people in the community and for them to access the services that they need in their community, and diverting them from emergency departments and hospitals and things like that. So I think what we're trying to do is figure out, how do, how do we right-size that so that we maintain a quality network? Make sure that it is in the parts of the community that we need it, which is why we lifted parts of it across the state, because Eastern and Western Maryland only comprises about 3% of our total provider population. So our rural communities are disproportionately impacted. But, you know, yes, I think there was missed opportunities for how we thought about, and again, I'm a little less than two years into the role, but I think there were some missed opportunities for how we thought about integrating quality and outcomes into a service that grew exponentially. And oftentimes, it's not until you take a retrospective look that you go, oh my goodness, right? Like, what sort of happened? And how do we, I don't want to call it course correct, but how do we build that foundation that's going to move us into the future?
I would just, thank you for that. That's super helpful. I would just also encourage that some of this work that you're, the quality work that you're doing and talking with residents is really about what their needs are. Because if their needs are not being met because they're just going to this place that they think they're going to get their needs met, you know, I would surmise, and my colleagues wouldn't be surprised when I mention this, that, you know, the increase in the reason why people are seeking- in the reason why people are seeking assistance is because they're unstable housed or that they don't have stable housing or that they need rental assistance and they're just trying to go somewhere. So I think that making sure that we're actually seeing what those needs actually are to be able to then get into what the treatment needs to be or what the services need to be is probably a helpful exercise as you're going through this process.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments and couldn't agree more. We also recognize that the social drivers of health have a direct impact on individuals' mental health and substance use, right? And so to that point, this goes to the trust of the provider, right? So if people are identifying as part of the services that they're receiving through PRP or any other service, that there's a need for something else, how are we making sure that we build that referral network to connect people? What may be outside of the scope of what that provider can provide? But I do hear you that it is part of how we think about quality. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here with us this morning. And thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Last question before we go into public testimony, Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for being here. I really appreciate the questions, all the questions so far, especially those from Councilperson Conway and Councilwoman Ramos. I wanted to focus a little bit on the growth side of this a little bit. You mentioned that the growth, the one slide you showed showed growth from 241 to 700. I think this year, you mentioned it's like in the high 600s is kind of where we're at provider-wise right now. And then matched by number of people served, right? So this last number, 51,000 in 2023, and we're already at 48,000 even with the lower number of providers through the first half of this year, right?
Through 2025, yes, sir.
Yeah, exactly. Very good. The growth, you gave lots of data about the spread of things at this moment, snapshot in time, roughly speaking. That growth we saw from 240 to 700, was that, was that generally consistent with where the concentrations already were? Was it just doubling or tripling down on those same concentrations? Or were there geographic patterns to show? Was it disproportionately some places? Or speak to the pattern of growth, not just where they are now, but also how we got from 241 to that.
Yeah, so, and happy to, and Dr. Yeo, I don't know if you're on the line, if you want to speak to this a little bit further, but what we have seen is the proliferation is within those four ZIP codes. So we have continued to see growth year over year in those specific ZIP codes that I identified earlier. And so, Dr. Yeo, anything, I don't know if he's able to speak or if he's still on the call. I don't want to hold it up. But the fact of the matter is, yes, there are certain parts of the state, and particularly in Baltimore, where we have seen expansion that outpaces other parts of the state.
Right. Along those lines, when we're talking about growth and expansion, how, I mean, I guess generally, I'm asking generally for some reflections right now, but if we can get specifics as an official request, that would also be good. How much of that growth is driven by the same providers creating multiple sites versus new providers entering the field? Can you give some sense of the balance? And then if we can get concrete numbers, that'd be great too.
Yes, I will get back to you. But we have seen growth in the number of provider sites. So this data here is inclusive of provider sites, but happy to share with you within Baltimore City, the number of providers with the number of associated sites.
Great. Your sense is more of the growth is driven by new entrance or it's a duplication of existing, like multiple sites of existing players? It's both? Okay. All right. Is there, within the licensing?
And Councilman, just last question before.
Yes, yes, it's on the, I appreciate. Within then, this kind of concept of growth and how growth has happened, is there a limit from a licensing and accreditation standpoint in terms of how many sites, how many clients, an individual, like lead provider, medical director, whatever that position is in this, can be responsible for?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you so much. Now we'll open up to public testimony. We'll first start with, we'll first start with Cecilia Gonzalez from Action Baybrook. No worries. If you can press the button. I'm sorry, Cecilia, press the button. There you go.
Hello. Good morning, everyone. My name is Cecilia Gonzalez. I'm the executive director of Action Baybrook. We are a community-based organization that we seek to improve the safety and well-being of residents in the Brooklyn and Curtis Bay neighborhoods. One of our main goals is to reduce the number of problem properties, which often are also problem businesses. We do property investigation work, and through this work, we have counted at least 32 PRPs in the Baybrook area, and this number continues to grow. Note that the state data shows only a handful of these places on their map for Baybrook, and also our ZIP code 21225 is not included in the list of ZIP codes of concern. It should be included. We know that PRP should have positive influence in the people and the communities where they serve, but having so many of these in a single community is problematic and very burdensome to our residents. This accumulation brings a lot of people in need from outside of the neighborhoods. And then these centers that we have may or may not be legitimate. In fact, we are pretty sure many are non. These centers attract also unwanted characters who predate on these most vulnerable people, and they also make our community unsafe. Many times, people, the services are not holistic. And people come, they get bussed into the community, they get dropped off, and they don't offer all the support that they should offer. And so people are wandering around the community. Often, they come right outside or across from the center. There are hotspots for drug selling that, and so that is a problem. And so we need better distribution of these places throughout the city, throughout the state. We need stricter regulations. We need better enforcement and evaluation of the services and the impact. We do want people to get the care and support that they need, but we also want these overaccumulation to be addressed in Baybrook. We'll be happy to work with you all, and we have shared the list of properties that we have counted with Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you. All right. We have Jan Evelyn.
Good morning. My name is Jan Evelyn. I'm with Action Baybrook. And before the deputy secretary scoots out the door, we just want to question the data on their map, because the data on their map shows eight treatment centers. We have 34.
So Jan, this is actually speaking towards the committee, not to the deputy secretary. Thank you very much, ma'am. Keep going.
I'm sorry?
Yep. So you are addressing the committee, not the deputy secretary?
Yes, yes. I understand that. Thank you. What we, we are confused, and I think a lot of people are, about the licensing requirements. What is what? We are able to see the mental health treatment centers, so those we can know about. We don't know about the residential treatment centers. Sometimes we see them, sometimes we don't. Sometimes we see them because there are 20 people hanging around outside. When my colleague, Ms. Gonzalez, mentioned the people that are bused in, that we are not talking five or 10 people. We are talking 800 and 900 people bused in, and they are bused into the corner of Patapsco and Hanover. If you know this corner, you know it is a high drug traffic area and high violent crime. And the concentration causes lack of efficacy in treatment. It's much less effective for patients who are being treated. It increases the crime, and we have data on this. And it also decreases property values. So we are very concerned at the concentration. We do not begrudge our fellow citizens treatment, but let's spread it around.
Sure. Thank you, Jan.
Thank you.
All right. We have Ben McCormick.
Top of the morning all. Top of the morning, Madam Chair, members of the council. How much time I got, Chair?
You have three minutes.
Three?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to say some things probably that's going to make me unpopular to some of my colleagues who are also providers, but that's okay. They'll probably take me off their Christmas list. My name is Ben McCormick. I am the executive director of the New Life Recovery Center. We were licensed in the last quarter of 2019 under the ASO at that time, which was Beacon. We then changed over in 2020 to the ASO Optum. And Optum in October of 2020 issued a, I called it an ultimatum. They said, you can no longer bill for IOP and PRP together, which had been the norm, and I'm sure you know that. So I was told by many of my colleagues that that was going to be terrible. I was due. So we chose to continue our IOP operation and licensure, and we discontinued our PRP licensure. What I found was, because we care, I care. My background is I am fortunate enough to have lived and living the best of old worlds. I'm a 25-year recovering addict, and I'm very, very grateful for that. So it's given me a little bit of different perspective than some of my fellow owners and executive directors in many of these programs. So what we did is we found different ways to continue to offer the services that PRP offers. So let me tell you what those are. Case management, which is under COMAR 10.09.48, is an alternative to some of the things that PRP requires. Simple employment, which is under COMAR 10.63.03.16, which is primarily to help folks get back to work. That's another means for providers who care to offer those services that PRP covers. I am fortunate enough to have four offices, two in Councilman Bullock's, thank you for coming by, when you came by two years ago, I appreciate that, and two in District, Zach Blanchard's district. So I'm fortunate enough. So if any council members want to come by and see how we operate, you're welcome to do that. So we applied for our support employment and our case manager license last year to supplement what we weren't able to do and get billed for, which is two different things because we were, one moment, which was, so we, we care. So we weren't getting billed for sending, get bond tokens and sending people by Uber and taking them to job, job appointments and things like that and interviews. But this is a business, and we were getting taxed. So we found a different way. So we started billing other different licenses, which COMAR offers if providers do actually care. So I wanted to offer that. So I thank you for the opportunity to testify. Have a great day.
Thank you so much, Ben, and I appreciate the alternatives that you provided. Next, I'm going to go to Mr. or Mrs. Esqu from the council president's office?
Oh, Esqu.
Okay, no worries. Okay, no worries. Next, we'll go to Darren Rogers.
The good shoe. I stepped on Ben's shoes. So good morning to everyone on the council. So I'm just excited today. I'm Darren Rogers, the CEO of Steps To A Success. I'm also the executive director of I Am Mentality. So I came today just to share, you know, my sentiments around. We all know that the PRP space has a negative connotation. Me personally, I've been providing PRP services for about 17 years. It's what led me into starting my nonprofit organization because what I realized is, even if you're able to get a person to where they're mentally well, it's typical for them to lack developmental leadership skills that will propel them to the next level of success. So I do believe there is a gap in, you know, some quality when it comes to programs and providers, and I would offer some suggestions about that. But I will also, you know, bang this desk and say that there are some really great providers, right? And one of the things that happens within like Baltimore City as it relates to in the nonprofit space, there are a whole bunch of programs that support nonprofit organizations with improving the quality of their work, right? And they're also incentivized financially. They're small groups that individuals can connect with to build upon their skill sets to learn from each other. I never really see anything like that in the space of PRPs, right? So I don't see that. When it comes to like BHA, COMAR, things of that nature, most providers feel like, you know, BHA to some degree is sort of like a boogeyman. It's not necessarily like a point person that you get to talk to. You submit your documents. It, you know, the quality of care can be, I've had, I've been able to create, you know, some relationships with individuals, but I would love to see more, you know, more convening, you know, more conversations with individuals so I can say, hey, X person is the individual that you go to when you're having struggles. Also creating a space where we could look at data from the services you provide so that, you know, quality individuals, what, you know, what probably hasn't been shared and maybe individuals don't know. If in order to have a PRP, you have to have licensed clinicians on your program that supervise individuals who provide services in the community. But it's really hard to obtain rehabilitation specialists. So if you lose your rehabilitation specialist, you lose your ability to provide services and things of that nature. But if we had some sort of data measuring systems, if we had like small groups where individuals could connect to, connect with quality programs, I think that will propel us to the next level. Another thing is, we, last week, you know, when I came here to discuss the opioid, opioid issue, I was also in the process of engaging in the CAF accreditation. You know, thank God, we did extremely well with that. And that's a way to measure the quality of your work and to support you with continually executing that work. But I think, you know, just from a CAF standpoint and a BHA standpoint, that needs to be consistent ongoing training and support that feels, you know, loving and caring. Because when you're providing these services, you're dealing with, you know, some of the greater challenges that the individuals you serve face. So if I'm dealing with a child who experienced, you know, multiple traumas and you're trying to help that child, there, it's typical for there to be a bunch of inconsistencies in that process. Challenges with connecting with parents, there's challenges with connecting with therapists. The whole PRP, you know, landscape is centered on the PRP provider supporting the therapist with reaching their goals within, you know, a timeframe. And that can become extremely cumbersome. So, you know, my request is just centered on, just, you know, just from Baltimore City, and I know you guys are thinking through this and working through it, but can we convene the same way we convene with the local nonprofits, right? Bringing in partners to say, hey, this is what's going on. These are the gaps that we're seeing. These are some quality organizations. These are some of the leaders in the space. These are the things that they do to execute and become better. And how do we get that camaraderie? Because I do feel like I'm in a space with, you know, Baltimore City government and providers where we are building, you know, quality relationships that'll support us with executing. So that was my purpose for coming here today, just to share that, to learn a little more, of course, you know, to obtain some contact so that I can feel a lot more comfortable as it relates to providing services to individuals within our community.
Yeah, and Darren, I really appreciate you. And stay tuned towards the fall. I'll be convening a behavioral health provider, it's like across the city. And so exactly what you're doing, you know, I'm big in stakeholder engagement, bringing all the parties to the table to see what we, what we have, how do we get here? What are the gaps and opportunities? But also using it as a matchmaking opportunity to provide connection and network with good providers in this space as well. So stay tuned in the fall. You'll be able to see a lot more coming out from this committee as an outcome from this particular oversight, hearing what the next steps are for, for PRPs across the city.
Absolutely.
Definitely. Thank you so much. All right. Are there any other persons that want to testify before we go back to our line of questioning? All right. Hearing and seeing none. You actually transitioned very well into, one of the big elephants in the room is workforce shortages within the behavioral health provider community. And so, Dan, I know you're kind of the hot one on the seat, you're the only one left. Talk to us about how you all, as you all kind of work with BHA for any type of COMAR regulations or changes to the COMAR regulations, how are you all accounting for those behavioral health provider shortages, particular to Baltimore City? Because Darren, I'm actually going to reference your testimony again. What we're seeing is that you have one provider serving multiple PRPs, and there's not really continuity. And also, there's not, sometimes there may be questions of quality as it relates to those that, you know, those providers serving multiple programs. those providers serving multiple programs.
Thank you, Chairwoman Porter, for the question. The behavioral health workforce shortage is severe. BHSP has promoted and supported a number of legislative efforts in the General Assembly to try to address that. There was a bill to do a statewide assessment of the behavioral health workforce that passed a couple of years ago. And that issued a number of recommendations. There's also some sort of reciprocity bills that passed to allow social workers from other states to, who have licenses to move to Maryland to work, counselors. So there's been some effort at the state level to address the workforce shortage, and BHSP is a strong proponent of those efforts. As regards to, you know, the issues of a one professional serving multiple sites, I think that is one of the things that is trying to be addressed by the new COOMAR regulations. The draft that was issued this spring, I think, does take that on directly and establishes different kind of categories of provider types. There's like supervisory versus like operational, and it breaks it down much more specifically. And, and so if that were to be adopted as official regulation, I think that would give BHA on the front end, when licensing is being applied for more authority, as well as BHSP in responding to concerns, like after licensure is issued, more authority too. So we're in support of that, but it still has to sort of go through the process.
At the Maryland General Assembly level, yeah. And so, you know, I'm wondering, just, you know, as we kind of go into this next phase of what that looks like for the Maryland General Assembly, I would love, and Deputy Mayor, this is kind of like for you all in the administration. I would love to see some sort of connection. We've talked about provider shortages in your former role in the Health Department. Like if we can have some sort of legislative push there, we have four, you know, we have major Eds and Meds here in the city of Baltimore. We should be able to provide that type of continuity with these programs. And so I would love to see if the mayor's administrations push that in the next General Assembly. And I know you'll have the support of this committee along with other council members to that effect as well. Daniel, I want to go back to the agreement to cooperate. And so one of my biggest pushes that I've been pressing upon BHSP is making sure that we have enforcement capabilities for our LBHAs. We are still seeing that that's not, but that's not as robust as I would like it to be. And the reason why I say that for the public's knowledge is that it provides the community an opportunity to have a say with these types of programs coming into their neighborhood, making sure that you establish MOUs that are stringent and codified. But also if there are issues with said programs, you have a lane to go to. How are you all working through that community partnership or community integration within the agreements to cooperate?
Yeah, thanks for that question. The agreement to cooperate is, is an important touch point in the, in the licensure process. As it stands today, it, the COOMAR regulation that establishes it is like one sentence long and explicitly says that you cannot deny an agreement to cooperate if all the paperwork is provided. So our hands are tied under current sort of interpretation and establishment of the regulation. We recommended in this revision of COOMAR that is ongoing that as a requirement for an agreement to cooperate, a provider must have an in-person meeting with, with us. And we would encourage, and already do encourage them to meet with, with elected leaders and neighborhood associations. But that would be a requirement. And if they don't meet with us directly, whether they have their paperwork in order or not, we would have the ability to, to not issue agreements to cooperate. We would also, the LBHA role is not very well spelled out in COOMAR today either. And so we also recommended kind of having a whole separate section about what is an LBHA, what can they do? What, like, how should the different stakeholders throughout the system work with LBHAs? And so, so we, you know, I think we're on the same team there, Councilwoman, and that we would love to see more authority be given to LBHAs, like in that process.
And I appreciate that. And for colleagues, for your knowledge, in the fall, we'll be having a similar legislative oversight hearing related to LBHAs and their work. We have quite a few across the state of Maryland, and those that work within our districts, we'll be able to ask them kind of what they're, what work they're doing, what work that they need us to do from a legislative perspective, but also providing a convening opportunity for any type of movement at the state level as well. All right, Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I want to go back to one of the pieces of testimony that was provided, and I think is a really, really important thing. We've talked a lot about quality here. I think, thinking about this, the quality issues that we've been having and their impact, I think, on the city generally, but certainly if you look at the map that the Deputy Secretary provided, we tend to see PRPs clustered really around our business corridors. And I was looking at, you know, the major business corridor in my district, Long York Road, and there's just a number of PRPs scattered all along the corridor. I think that is, that is not necessarily need to be a problem. I think it becomes a problem when we have low-quality issues. But I do think it is also indicative, even if we had high quality, I think it still creates a problem in that we are not distributing these resources appropriately across the state, and we find Baltimore being the place where the concentration is. And I realize this is a balance of sorts. This is where there is the greatest need. We have the greatest need for these services here in Baltimore City. But what I can't wrap my head around is do we have too many PRPs in the city? Do we have a sense of how many Baltimore City proper actually needs? So there's, there's the quality, and then there's the right fit. And I would rather, of course, I think we would all rather have high-quality PRPs serving, you know, the people of Baltimore City appropriately. And to see those same services, high-quality, in the surrounding counties. But what I don't know is how we assess the need here. Do we have some sense of how we look at the need for PRPs? I know it's a kind of a Weasley question. You can give me a Weasley answer, but it...
No, I appreciate the question. It's a, it's a good one. You know, you look at these maps and you look at these graphs and the explosion and the, and the number. Like, it's, it's a good question to ask if, if this additional capacity is resulting in additional care and additional benefits to the folks who live in Baltimore. There isn't an assessment like that that currently precedes, you know, approval of a provider. The information that the Deputy Secretary shared about starting to explore, like, can there be? Like, is there some sort of fitness criteria, I believe is what she said, that can incorporate a, a look at what needs are there in the community? And is this meeting the needs, or is this, is there actually not a need for additional services? BHSP supports that, that effort, and we look forward to talking to BHA about that. And, and, you know, our peer to be a thought partner and to, to explore, like, how, how can that be incorporated into, into our processes? Those sorts of processes do exist in some other instances, like in order to open a new hospital, you need to get, obtain a certificate of need to open a new federally qualified health center. You need to demonstrate that there is a health professional shortage area. But that process just doesn't exist for community behavioral health providers. Like, you know, we are in any willing provider state, so that's just sort of how, how our Medicaid system is set up. And there was also a lawsuit here in the city, and I believe it was 2012, that alleged that limitations on behavioral health providers was ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act violation. So you either need to limit all healthcare providers under a certain zoning regime or, or allow them. I think, man, I, I don't know the ins and outs of that ruling super well, but, but I know it has had an impact on sort of what, what is, what, you know, what options the, the city may have. But I can tell you that BHSP shares your, your concern about having too many providers potentially, or there being like waste potentially, and, and we want to be a part of that conversation. And we're interested in digging in and seeing what, what new processes and criteria can be, can be found.
That was a really good answer for a Weasley question. I think, the, the, and we've had these conversations, Dan, so I, I know you know where my head is here and how nuanced and careful I want to be, because there is absolutely a great need here in Baltimore. The, the, the trouble is when we have too many, what I'm finding, and certainly within my district, and I'm sure my colleagues would corroborate this, we're finding that these centers are crowding out other business activity, because it is so lucrative to make these Medicaid claims and Medicare claims for folks. It is such an easy way to make money. And the, the problem is, I have no problem making your money as long as you're delivering high-quality services for Baltimore City residents. But if we're serving people in Howard County, Baltimore County, and otherwise, we should just open those places in those respective counties and make them high-quality services as well. So I really appreciate your, your answer, and I would love to follow up with you offline about some of the ways we've, other institutions such as hospitals that aren't able to just open unnecessarily, that might help us, one, keep track of quality, also have a sense of need, so that we balance the two in a way that doesn't, I think, create challenges. And the only places in which these, these institutions are allowed in, in our business districts. So, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you help me a little bit better understand the COOMAR regulation change situation? So it's my understanding that there were regulations that were sent out for comment. The recommendations that BHSP wanted are not in there, and I think they would have had some of the things that we have asked for, like that, you know, you get a sense of who's coming prior to the licensing or, you know, something, so that we get a heads up a lot earlier. But it, there was something with some of the providers that were not happy about it. And so which committee from the General Assembly said that they want to take a look at it? Is it the, right, the, um, Health and Government? Was it the Joint Committee on Administrative, Executive, and Legislative? Like, well, I mean, I'm just trying to understand where we are, because we, we have partnerships with our General Assembly partners. And Madam Chair, maybe it makes sense to meet with them directly, our General Assembly partners on, on this subject. So I'm sure you have. I'm totally sure you have, to, to figure, you know, I'm just curious how that's going.
Sure, yeah. And I apologize, I'm looking up the exact name of the committee right now. Yeah, so it's a special committee. It's the Joint Committee on Administrative, Executive, and Legislative Review, AELR.
Yep.
The co-chairs are Senator Mary Washington and Delegate Sandy Rosenberg, so they're Baltimore folks. And they review all regulations, and it's usually kind of perfunctory, like they review it and just kind of move it along. And I'm, I'm sure they look at it.
They do. They take very good, copious, yeah, these are very detailed, Senator and Delegate, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. But in this case, this, this journey on the COOMAR Tennessee C3 has been a lengthy one. I believe, like, they were, BHA was looking at revising them before COVID, and then had some conversations. COVID happened, it got sort of put on hold, of course. And then in 2024, this pause on Medicaid enrollment was announced, and some draft regulations were shared. We really appreciate it, because like, they were shared publicly, they, they had listening sessions with different provider groups. And then, and we were able to provide informal comments kind of before the whole formal process kicked off. Then the formal process kicked off in, I believe it was March or April of this year. And they looked very different from what was shared back in August of 2024. They also only included like half of the relevant subchapters. And so some of the stuff that was shared kind of referenced, like, you need to see the whole thing a little bit to know how they, how they would apply. And so the big changes that occurred between those listening sessions in the summer of 2024 and then being published in the register in spring of 25, along with the incompleteness, I think gave everybody pause. And then the provider group specifically, there were a lot of changes that were just surprises in terms of educational requirements for different provider types, what accrediting bodies could be, could be used. And there was concern that this would worsen the provider workforce shortage and would potentially result in the closure of providers, sort of with a, with a too broad of a brush, without really looking at quality, just kind of looking at like who can find these even more rare licensed behavioral health providers. I don't want to, like, there was a letter, BHSP didn't sign on to it, like, as our role, it was more of a provider-led issue around the workforce shortage and the change in the requirements for different provider types. But, but we, we kind of get where they were coming from in their, in their concerns. And so they wrote a letter to AELR, and then AELR paused the regulations kind of until the state can sort of satisfy these concerns.
Okay, so the, the, right now, we're waiting on MDH to, you know, do a little bit more refinement and then present it back out. Yeah, okay.
And I haven't even seen like a formal response.
Are they waiting on all this data collection that they're doing before issuing those?
I, I can't really speak to it. I'm not sure.
That's a question for the Deputy Secretary.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
What we would recommend, and I know what the provider groups recommended, is since only half of them were shared, finish the other half and then reissue them in a complete fashion. And I believe the timeline for that other half of the regs is fall.
It is fall. And so it lines up, Councilwoman, it lines up with our subsequent oversight hearings for this as well.
Okay, well, I, I am confident that you had all of this in mind, and I was just trying to understand, so I appreciate it, Madam Chair.
It's a lot of twists and turns.
No worries.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I just wanted to understand the COOMAR piece a little bit better. And I'll probably have some follow-up, but I'll work through, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Perfect. Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry you're in the hot seat. So, a question I've been having with a number of providers, as we're rolling out these new COOMAR regulations, the question I have, would you have any recommendations for, in the case where there's multiple providers under one owner in their entities, how does the oversight system for the clients being referred to the best care option, not the most profitable option, is looked at? So that we can provide guidance on that, because if I have, if I have psychological services that I have a provider that I'm working with, and I'm referring you directly to them, and I'm getting a portion of those billables, how do we make sure that we're getting you the best care possible and not just what is easiest for me to bill?
Yeah, well, I know, you know, BHSP is very interested in this quality conversation. Assessing quality under behavioral health is a, it's not as straightforward as assessing quality for somatic healthcare. Like, relapse is a part of, of the process, and stability in the community is sort of the goal. And so like, it's a little, it's an ongoing, ongoing discussion around assessing quality. But we are very interested in that. We have been starting, like, in collaboration with the mayor's office as part of the opioid strategic plan to develop some like levels of, of care for some specific substance use providers. And we're just starting like with, with a manageable sort of range, and we have not started with PRP. But, but we are starting that, that process so that providers that do provide excellent care, that, that have a wide range of hours, that provide a wide range of case management services, that are not, are providing more than just the minimum amount are recognized. And, and that will hopefully, and then we would make that public, and that would help to drive folks, help to give the communities more information about like who, who is, you know, kind of going above and beyond the, the basic requirements. So that's like one thing around quality. In terms of like the multiple owners, that is being addressed in the... is being addressed in the, the COMAR regulation, or they're really trying to tighten up sort of the different roles that people can have, and, and, you know, we, we support the efforts that, that have been made in those regulations.
That's perfect, because I'm just wondering, like, daylighting that portion, because you can have multiple LLCs, and you don't actually have to say who's the members of those LLCs. And I found that there was a provider who actually had six LLCs that were a part of their referral system. And they were benefiting, but they were also a member of that LLC but didn't disclose it completely. So this is helpful for me because I think about, as I look at outcomes, and we'll look forward to having an offline conversation about hospitalization rates, as well as relapse rates, so that we can talk about what does quality look like?
Sure.
So that we're really doing as what we did for general healthcare through Obamacare, making sure that you are a healthy person, and we're giving you more money because you have now have a healthier person, not just treating the baseline. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. And, and just as a reminder, if you're discovering kind of unscrupulous business practices or anything, like, please let us know. Again, you can just reach out to us directly, or there's that, that form online, the complaint form?
Perfect. Thank you so much. So now, we have two online public testimony persons. So Marguerite is going to unmute you all. I'm going to first start with Vanessa Day. And Vanessa, if, there should have been a dialogue box that has popped up on your screen to unmute. Vanessa, can you hear me? All right. And Vanessa, from our side, it looks like you're unmuted. Okay, we're going to come back to Vanessa. I'm going to next go to Yolanda Pully.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I heard you.
Yeah.
I'm texting her now.
Yeah, me too.
All right, it looks like we can't hear you in the chamber. So, Yolanda, I know that, I know that you all have submitted testimony, so you all can hear each other on the WebEx, but we can't hear you in the chamber. Okay, so unfortunately, we're unable to hear you all. Hold on one second. All right, can you all speak again?
Hello?
Okay, perfect. Are you Vanessa or Yolanda?
This is Vanessa.
Okay, Vanessa, thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this morning. This is a topic that's near and dear to my heart. I am Vanessa Day, CEO of Fox Chubby Health Policy Consulting, and I am a compliance officer. When I first got into this work, I looked around, I said, oh, you know, this is a, this is definitely in the space of things I care about, things I'm professionally trained to do. When I saw the quality of the services being provided, particularly in my community, I was concerned, and I felt like it was an area that I could do something about. What I learned is that there definitely are great providers operating. We are, as has been said before, an all-willing provider state. And what I've seen that produce is kind of a situation where we have knowledge gaps. So we have clinicians who have come into the space, but not maybe, but don't necessarily have the business expertise to run a sustainable practice, to focus on the quality and do the clinical work. But then on the other side, I've seen that in the community, we have operating business people who recognize the, the value of, or the, the business aspect of it, but don't necessarily have the clinical expertise. And as these entities kind of come together, there's, there are knowledge gaps that don't necessarily get bridged. My push with BHA as well as with LBHA, particularly from a, a compliance and quality standpoint, is around provider education. One of the other test, gentleman that delivered a testimony said exactly what we try to do, which is convene providers, have mentorship circles, bring understanding around the idea of how you provide these services in a quality manner because they are extremely important. And we have done that with our own owners and hope that that kind of strategy can be implemented in partnership with both the monitoring and pushing forward, you know, the kind of strategy that, that is holding folks accountable. We do think that, that education piece is of primary importance. Because we do recognize that however folks come to this business, being able to demonstrate how quality and compliance can integrate, not just, well, especially to provide quality for services, but also to provide continuity of care and sustainability in businesses is very important, and is a, a way that we've been able to get providers to actually move that, that needle and care about quality. Even providers who may have not originally been in the space of doing it because they recognize the importance of providing the service. And so I would just urge, as we think about this as a community and as a partnership, that we remember that, that aspect of it.
No, thank you so much, and that was very compelling testimony. Thank you so much. All right, we'll next go to Yolanda Pully.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, ma'am.
Okay, so Brandon Rising, we appreciate the opportunity to submit testimony for a Public Health Environment Committee Legislative Oversight Hearing for PRPs in Baltimore City. But let us be clear, this is not just about oversight, it's about justice. Justice for our communities, for those who have used, manipulated, and abandoned by a system that was supposed to, to help, to help them heal. Far too long PRP programs in Baltimore City have operated under a cloud of fraud, exploitation, and silence. We watch these programs, many of them ran by individuals who are not rooted in our community, buy social security numbers, enroll people in programs without their knowledge, and submit Medicaid billing codes for opioid use disorders for individuals who have never touched a narcotic in their life, in their life. Let us be clear, and let us stop pretending that this is rare because it's not. It's widespread. It is rampant. And all the money trail leads back to a bank account of companies, many of them Nigerian or African-run, that have turned mental health into a cash cow instead of a calling. They made millions off our pain, and they have given nothing back. Not a bookbag, not a Thanksgiving meal, not a toy drive, not one gallon of milk to a hungry child on Pennsylvania Avenue. They have taken for us and left us to fend for ourselves. But then you have the Journey Mental Health well-finished. This, this, this isn't a PRP. It's a lifeline located in the heart of Pennsylvania Avenue where, where too many have turned a blind eye. The Journey Mental Health does what the government and privateers have failed to do. They serve without question, without funding, and without fan sales. And let us tell you what the journey looks like. A community refrigerator that's filled from her own pocket while the rest of these PRPs pretend they don't see the hunger outside their doors. Bookbag giveaways for children who will otherwise show up to school with nothing. Thanksgiving basket giveaways and toy drives. Feeding over 700 people a week alongside Simmons Memorial Church on Pennsylvania and Covell. And every bit of, every bit of this, not for clients, not for billing, but for community. Nikki Smith does, does not get paid for this. In fact, she works overnight shift to keep her office open. She's been fighting for years to receive her MA number to bill with, while fraud-ridden PRPs continue to business as usual, untouched, unchecked, and unbothered. And now, because of their greed, she's being punished. She's on the verge of closing her doors, not because she did something wrong, but because she allowed, because you allowed the ones who did everything wrong to keep operating while you placed a moratorium that suffocated the ones who got it right. Where was the oversight when companies were submitting fake claims? Where was the oversight when they used our community members as pawn and it gave them Medicaid fraud? Where was the oversight before another moratorium got placed, pushing the few who cares to the brink of collapse? The community says they want accountability, accountability left be cleared. And investigate fraudulent PRPs that never give back to the communities that they exploit. Lift the barriers for providers like the Journey Mental Health, who have followed every rule. She has her receipt, and yet she continues to be punished. Offer emergency funding to the handful of PRPs who are truly embedded in the community they serve, and not just because, not just to save for a grant application. And most of all, stop making good, good ones suffer because the greedy got away with it. If the Journey Mental Health closes its door, it will, it won't just be another loss of a program. It will be the loss of one, of the only ones who stay when everybody else turn their backs. Baltimore deserves better. Pennsylvania Avenue deserves better, and she deserves better. And we're not, and we will not stay silent while someone who brewed here gets crushed under a system and keeps getting reward for those who flew here. Because it's not just the doors that will close, it's the spirit of the neighborhood that will be buried with her. And when the lights go out in her office, what will be left? Another vacant building, another broken promise, another reminder that no good deed goes unpunished when it's done by black hands. And where's the mercy for those who follow all the rules? Where's the emergency relief for the woman, the woman who has filled more stomachs than a city contract ever had? You speak of oversight, yet you close your eyes when the fraud was flashy and open them only when a wimp once showed up without gold fingers and lies on their lips. The Journey Mental Health does not have TR campaigns. She has people, she has a purpose. She has a pain that she carries in silence. So her community doesn't have it.
Ms. Pully, you have thirty more seconds, ma'am.
Thank you. And while others gave out clickboards and lies, she gave out sandwiches and a reason for hope. This woman is true Baltimore, not imported, not optimistic, not performative, but rooted in concrete, like the roses Tucoc spoke of, gritty, beautiful, and resilient. And you have the audacity to let her down while, let her drown while fraud, fraud flows. Let us hear it be a reckoning that the moment, let this be the moment that you just don't record the testimony but respond to it. Investigate those who built wealth on deceit, restore the dignity of those who built in trust and sweat, and stop turning our black women into collateral damage for policy that was too cowardly to target the real criminals. I am Yolanda Pully, and we are people empowered by the struggle. Thank you for letting me testify.
Yes, of course. Thank you so much, Yolanda, and thank you so much for being a partner in the work. You've been doing this work for some time now, and so I just want to thank you for testifying today. So we're going to close public testimony, just to provide some closing remarks. I know, again, we are having these series of legislative oversight hearings to kind of really address behavioral health, mental health, the opioid crisis within the city of Baltimore, within this committee, and through partnerships with other committee members and also committees, we're, we're attempting to solve, or at least resolve incrementally, these issues that we have been experiencing in Baltimore for some time now. In this particular, this particular legislative oversight hearing, you know, it was really incumbent upon us to leverage the state-level relationships. A lot of the, the fraud, waste, and abuse that we are, you know, that we claim to be experiencing are handled at the, at the state level. And so we need to have a partnership with BHA. We need to have a partnership with our partners in the Maryland General Assembly for us to continue to do this work and for us to continue to advocate from a council's perspective what we can do to advocate on behalf of the citizens of Baltimore to make sure that they're getting the quality services for, whether it be substance abuse, behavioral health, or any type of service, making sure that they're getting quality services as well. So thank you all so much, and have a good day.